Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the October 17th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, and much -- general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the projects, along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. It is our goal to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now receive public statements. This is a time reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the public hearings portion of the agenda. Please note if you are here for items 5A through 5G, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no speakers, we will now move on to the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items. These agenda items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Item for separate consideration?
Uh, yeah. Uh, if...
You're denouncing it?
Yeah.
You're, uh, you're reading forward, way ahead of me, okay. If not, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Items?
I'll move.
Thanks, Commissioner Rudnick. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Coleman.
Should we just do a roll call vote, just to make it easier?
I believe so. We're like 0-for-12 right now, I think, yeah.
I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for Commissioner Bell's vote. Yeah?
Oh. Not to call anyone out, but, uh...
Motion passes.
All right. Go team. Uh, we're getting better at this, folks, yeah. We will now move on to the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Planning Director will read the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of the items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If the, if the item is not removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. I've been told that a commissioner has a conflict with one of the items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove, uh, item F, uh, I recuse myself from item F as a potential source of income.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Bowers will be recused from item 5F. Um, all right. And with that, Mr. Coyle, will you give us a brief introduction to the items to be considered tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Project 5A is an extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 12201, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of five commercial parcels on 11.3 acres located at the northwest corner of Stockdale Highway and Heath Road. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6736, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 17 lots, creating 185 residential condominium units within the Rio Bravo Golf Course Community located south of Casa Club Drive and east of Miramonte Drive. Project 5C is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6755, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 91 single-family lots on 33 acres located on the north side of East Hosking Avenue, about half a mile east of South Union Avenue. Project 5D is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6807, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 315 single-family residential lots on 86.4 acres located at the northwest corner of Taft Highway and Green Road. Project 5E is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6860, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 268 single-family residential lots on 69.9 acres located near the northwest corner of Gosford Road and Taft Highway. Project 5F is a vesting tentative parcel map 12326, which is a proposal to subdivide 8.37 acres into four parcels for future commercial development located at the southeast corner of Rosedale Highway and Gibson Street. And finally, Project 5G is an amendment to Title 17 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code relating to parking space requirements within the Central District and other mixed-use areas. This concludes my reading of this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony. Just request that the item be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience wishing to move an agenda item to the public hearing portion, are there any commissioners wishing to remove a Consent Calendar item?
Yes. I'd like to remove item 5G, amendment to Title 17, for further discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Are there any other commissioners wishing to move any additional items for further discussion? Seeing no, um, okay. Okay. Seeing no other items wishing to be moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda, I will now, at this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar item, or on Consent Calendar Items 5A, B, C, D, E, and F are now closed, with Commissioner Bowers abstaining from voting on item 5F. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar's Items 5A through F, with Commissioner Bowers abstaining on 5F?
I, I don't know if it's clear to do them separate, like do 5A through 5E, and that way Mr. Bowers can participate and then separate 5F?
It's fine to vote all at once. That's how we traditionally do it, and just note for the record that he abstains, since we're not discussing it in any way, shape, or form, we're just approving it on the Consent Calendar.
Great. Okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion to approve items 5A through F and accept staff recommendations.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Bell. Commissioners, please cast your vote and press the button twice.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bowers abstaining on item 5F.
Thank you. It is now time to hear the public hearing on Consent Calendar Item 5G, which has been moved to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Before I begin, I'd like to explain how a hearing, the hearing is, will be conducted. Staff will first give a more in-depth report, then those in favor of the project will have the opportunity to speak. After those in favor have spoken, those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. If there are speakers on both sides, each side will be given a five-minute total time to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you'd prefer, written, uh, written comments may also be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commissioners. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments in a clear and concise way. With that, Mr. Coyle, will you please provide us your staff report on item 5G?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. We're here to talk about an amendment to Section 17.58.120 of the Bakersfield Municipal Code. This started with a referral from Councilmember Smith at the September 11th, 2019 City Council Meeting, who requested a change to parking requirements for businesses downtown, so that any property that had a change of use would not be required to provide additional parking. The purpose of this change is to offer another incentive for development and redevelopment in the Central District of downtown Bakersfield. And here is a picture of the Central District. Basically, it's bounded by California Avenue to the south, Golden State Avenue to the north, F Street to the east, and V, as in Victor Street to, uh, excuse me, F Street to the west, and V, as in Victor Street to the east, excuse me. Just a little background on the ordinance, in 1990, uh, an ordinance was passed that allowed reduced parking for specific uses in the downtown area. In 2008, that list of uses was expanded. In 2013, the area in which those parking reductions were available was expanded. And, as I mentioned earlier, in September of this year, then Councilmember Smith made a request of staff to bring this text amendment forward to both the Planning Commission and then to City Council. Basically, certain projects in the Central District, the map that you just saw, Oldtown Kern, which was one of the areas that was added when they expanded the area where these parking reductions could be applied, and the CC Zone District, they already may receive up to a 50% reduction for off-street parking. However, that reduction does not apply to residential uses in the Central District. Here are a couple of examples of parking requirements for uses that we would expect to find in the Central District. General retail, restaurants, and the next page will show bars and nightclubs. An important point to make here is that for restaurants and bars or nightclubs that have less than 3,000 square feet of gross floor area, the Planning Director may already waive all or a portion of the parking requirements for those types of uses. In 2018, April of 2018, the City Council was presented with a downtown parking study. That parking study has basically been shepherded by the City Manager's Office. I had been with the city for exactly one month when this first came to council, so I am not the expert on the parking study. However, we did meet with the City Manager's Office prior to tonight's meeting to discuss this very project, and they're already implementing some of the recommendations from the parking study. Specifically, they have put new signs up with more consistent time limits, 60 minutes, 90 minutes, and two hours. I think before, parking was all scattered in terms of the time limits and what areas of the downtown those time limits applied. There is improved enforcement of the parking, and that's, that's kind of a double-edged sword from what we hear from the City Manager's Office. They get, uh, both compliments and complaints about parking. It's like, wow, your enforcement people are actually too efficient, because they're coming by and making people move after they've been there for a certain amount of time. And they've also made some significant improvements to the parking garage structure at 18th and I Streets. That was, uh, those were some improvements made during Phase 1. In Phase 2, they created what is being called the G Street Parking Mall on G Street between 18th and 20th Streets. I believe they added a total of 15 additional spaces down there. Plus, the way that that parking mall is designed, it also has certain traffic calming features. It's kind of a transportation planning geek term about traffic calming, but if you have nice, wide lanes, that tends to let people think they can speed down the road. Traffic calming puts certain features in those speeding drivers' way to make them slow down and be, uh, more considerate of the pedestrians who are walking around downtown, which I think is what we all want. This study is not over, from what I understand. City Council, or in particular, the City Manager's Office, has noted that they've only begun the implementation of the parking study recommendations for less than a year. So, they're, they're looking for a little time to, one, implement more of the recommendations, and, two, to evaluate those implementation measures that are already in place. But we've been told by the City Manager's Office that there will be a follow-up study, probably towards the latter part of next year, where they're going to look at things like more parking malls downtown, perhaps metered parking. So, I'm, I'm confident that the City Manager's Office is staying on top of the situation. We've got reams of data in terms of the parking garage at 18th and I Street, for instance. It's only typically at about 50% capacity, so there are still plenty of spaces available in that parking garage. This is the ordinance before you tonight, where any change of use in the Central District is not going to require additional parking. Thank you. This is just an example of one of the situations that we have had to deal with in terms of parking. We're looking at a facility that was at one time the San Joaquin Bank, then it became a Citizens Business Bank, and then a developer came in with a proposal to convert that bank into a restaurant. Now, the, the parking requirements for a bank are one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. Parking requirements for a restaurant are nearly four times that, one space per 75 square feet of gross floor area, and the, the developer could not come up with the parking, so they decided to just renovate it for yet another bank. A lot of people are banking these days online, so I'm not sure how much longer these physical facilities are going to be needed, but I would think a restaurant downtown is more of an amenity than another bank. So, the hope is that by adopting this text amendment this evening, or recommending to City Council, that they adopt the, the text amendment, that we can alleviate situations like this from, from happening in the future and have more redevelopment in the downtown, attracting more people, keeping more people downtown, encouraging businesses to come in and develop, encouraging people to develop residential units, to take advantage of the amenities downtown. So, I believe this concludes my staff report, and we are now available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no one wishing to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no audience requests to speak, should we just close the hearing and move to questions and comments at the same time? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edgar. Seeing as there are no audience members wishing to speak, I will now, uh, close the public hearing, or, and move to Commissioner comments and questions and action. Commissioner Rudnick?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. You were talking about the restaurant issue, which makes sense on that bank building, that you shouldn't have been so harsh on the parking, and you didn't have the ordinances to allow yourself not to be that way, I think is what we're cleaning up today, correct? Yes, Commissioner, that is correct. Okay. Because the other building that absolutely has no parking and is, and has a restaurant, obviously was approved, but I'm guessing it was grandfathered in, and I can't remember the name of the establishment, is it 1732 or something? It's the old bank building on Chester. It's a real neat building, but, 1800, sorry, I knew it was something like that. I mean, because it's a great building, but there's absolutely no parking with that, so logically, this other bank building would have been great to have had as a restaurant. But, uh, since it was similar use, it was allowed, is my, is my guess. I'm being told that the, that facility is less than 3,000 square feet, which was why the parking was waived? I see. Okay. That makes sense. And the other question I have, since this is a parking ordinance for downtown, et cetera, to me personally, as a, as someone trying to park on Chester, I think cosmetically, those trees that are in the parking areas is beautiful, but as far as functionality of parking there, it's horrific. And I would hope that we don't have anything like that in this proposed ordinance, or any other that are coming. Can you address that at all? Well, I don't believe that there are any other ordinances that would further compound that problem. I don't think that's the, that's the intention of this ordinance at all. Are we doing that anywhere else? In other words, putting landscaping where parking should be in any other part of the city? Not that I'm aware of. Okay. Because it's just really not practical when you try and park there. All right, super. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bell.
So, Director, if I may, a couple of questions. I'd like to direct him in a manner of a couple buildings that are existing downtown that are blighted. Maybe you can help me understand what it could do for that, or if it would do anything. So, in the corner of Chester and 24th Street, which is a large retail building, they sold off part of their parking, and, um, they've tried to market that now. I mean, it's been years, and they, I think it's on the top 10 hit list of our now-assistant city manager, but she really disliked that. Another one is Rodeo Coast Street from the 24th Street Cafe, where, again, a building has inadequate parking, so does it go to its least use? So, on Chester, would that have been a furniture store? And so, that would be the obligation of parking? Do we waive parking? What is the effect to a building like that? And then, across the street, I think that was, uh, might have been, I really don't know what it was last, but in any case, if it were a warehouse, for instance, which is like 1 in 500 or 1 in 1,000, I think, in parking, does that mean it could move all the way uphill to something substantially better and, uh, and perhaps make it more marketable and usable?
I, I think the intent of this ordinance and the intent of, uh, the direction that we're getting in the Development Services Department is to make things easier to redevelop downtown, to incentivize people from coming downtown. So, I, I think this ordinance is a good first step. Obviously, we will probably need to find other examples where we, we may need to do something above and beyond this particular ordinance.
Can I maybe add a question to Commissioner Bell's? Because I think there is a little bit, is there a baseline parking requirement that it's then not going over, or is there, or is it essentially what parking is provided is what parking is provided, and any use can come into these abandoned buildings?
So, if you, if you look at the language of the ordinance, we just went back to it, it's we won't require additional off-street parking to what the existing use was. So, if it was a warehouse and a restaurant wants to come in, as long as they are not required to expand the building size, that parking requirement would stay. So, in effect, that building existed and was open before, so now it could change to a higher use, like a restaurant.
I guess, I'll go after Commissioner Coleman, because I'm jumping the queue. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Coyle, for following up on this parking matter. We talked earlier in the week about it, and I appreciate you going the extra distance to talk to the City Manager's Office about what is being done to address some of the concerns that were raised in the 2018 parking structure, and when I... And when I emailed you, I made a term of calling it an erroneous parking study, and you questioned me on it, and I read it again, and it does have a little bit more detail than I remember it having, but basically it showed that, you know, we really didn't have a parking problem because they're only 46% capacity here most of the time. Unfortunately, they used too broad of an area, so if you're at 18th and I Street, for example, you know, you're not going to park on G Street. You're just not going to do it. And so I'm happy to hear you say that they are starting to address some of the issues in that study, and so I'll look for some of those improvements. Are there going to be any more of those back-end diagonally parking spots? Those are, everybody loves those, you know. I have another question, though, on the, in your, in the agenda, it talks about making this change for the central district and other mixed-use areas, and that seemed a little bit broad to me. And I just wanted to be sure what areas that we're really talking about, because I don't think we have this problem on California Avenue, where, which is in the central district, but we certainly have it on 18th Street, 19th Street, 20th Street.
Yes. Well, the heading of the section is within the central district and other mixed-use areas, but the text change that we're proposing this evening only applies to the central district.
So if you look at that ordinance on the screen, you'll see the title of that section. It does say, like Director Coyle just stated, "central district and other mixed-use areas", and that section refers specifically to Old Town Kern and the CB or CC zone, which is a little outside the central district, but not California Avenue or anything. It's still mostly the downtown core, but this change, if you read that exact language, is specific to the central district.
I think you addressed most of my other concerns in your staff report when you talked about the parking survey that was done and what was being done to try to improve the parking based on those recommendations in 2018. And you mentioned a new study being done, it's going to have a more narrow, this new study would have a more narrow focus, or how would that be?
Well, I gave two examples of things that they wanted to look at in the next round of the study, and that was increasing the number of parking malls downtown, similar to the G Street project, and also perhaps considering metered parking as well. I don't know what other items are on the list, but I would be happy to contact the city manager's office and follow up with the commission.
Okay. I think that's all for this meeting. Thank you very much for your report.
I have a couple of questions for staff. One being, so the stated intent of this is to encourage occupancy of buildings that have sat empty, and noticing that the buildings that are empty are, you know, there's certain requirements that are maybe more intended for suburban parts of town that don't necessarily apply to downtown. The way that we're discussing this tonight, I have a question about, I think many of the structures we see vacant downtown are buildings that are 100% of lot area or four-story buildings that are completely built out. There's maybe a 50-square-foot backyard. Those buildings that are empty currently and have no onsite parking and no conceivable way to provide onsite parking, is there still a requirement for them to adhere to a baseline of whatever historic use they were, or is that basically saying that their built form and their historic date allows them to not provide parking?
So that's going to require some staff discretion, I would say, because some of those buildings, you're right, are historic in nature, and they probably didn't require parking at the time. And I think this gives us that leeway, because the language "no additional parking" will be required from the previous use. So if that building existed in some form and fashion as an approved use, changing it alone without expanding the building won't require additional parking.
Because I would nod to the city, I think the 3,000-square-foot or smaller restaurant space has been really transformative in getting small, like locally-owned restaurants to open downtown, but that wasn't, they weren't providing any parking. It kind of took a building and said, "This is a beautiful bank building at 18th and Chester. There's no conceivable way of providing onsite parking. We can't expect one restaurant to build a parking garage to meet their need. No parking is required." Whereas I think this, yeah, I think there's a little bit of vagueness as far as a lot of the buildings that are empty, that's the scenario, is there's no way to provide parking and create a feasible project without, you know, purchasing the adjacent building and making a parking lot. So I, and that idea of historic use, I think it's just, it's a little vague to me as to whether its use was an office building in the 50s where parking wasn't required, or if it's an office building and therefore it has to park at 100 to 200 spaces, even though there's no conceivable way of providing 100 to 200 spaces. Because it seems like we're not very far along in that conversation if it's the latter, because we haven't, you know. So I'm just curious on that distinction, because the way I'm hearing it now versus previous conversations with staff, it's been both, and so I'm, I just would like to hear your thoughts on that and what's intended.
It's complicated, I'll say, and it's probably both is the answer, because some buildings, depending on when they were approved or when the last use was in there, are going to have different standards. And I'll go back to the term "no additional parking," so I look at that as you're doing a change of use. If the change of use was from a 1950 use, which had no parking, then there's still no parking. Because otherwise, like you said, we just, that's a forever vacant building if there's no way to work around it. But I know staff and the building department is here if they want to chime in. They do work a lot with applicants on finding parking if there is some required off-street parking leases with nearby parking lots or other possible alternatives.
I think, like, I had a previous conversation with staff, not a staff member that's here tonight, but about the not seeing parking as a hindrance to renovate this building, but to see it as a developer or business owner's risk of going out and finding that parking and determining what really is needed for this building and not using 100 spaces as a hindrance to renovate, you know, a four-story building that otherwise could get tenants. So I just, I think the term "use" to me is confusing whether that means, oh, it was an office in the 50s, go-to-office and parking standards, versus it was an office building in the 50s, and it was, when it was built, there was no parking standards, so we're holding it to the parking requirements of the 1950s? Because those are two very different ways, and I think having it be, well, submit your application, and let's see what we decide on this one, is not a very good way of setting up incentivizing development, because it...
Well, I, maybe I misspoke, but what I'm saying is, because a lot of downtown has had new uses go in since the 50s, so a lot of them, some of them haven't, though. Some of them have been vacant, like Turks is probably a good example. It was built back when parking standards were completely different. So a use could potentially go in there and maybe not have to apply anything, but staff is going to have to look, it's a factual question on the application. That's, I don't want to give an answer promising something tonight, that when staff looks at what comes in, it's going to be a different determination.
Well, because to me, it seems like your language about the planning director confirming that no additional square footage is provided, is that we're not trying to set a policy tonight to allow developers to come in and add whatever density they want and throw out parking standards, but it looks more like we're acknowledging that there are buildings that exist in an urban form that could be a better service to our community, and that for those things to happen, tearing out the neighboring building that is also historic and also gives that walkable character to provide a surface parking lot is maybe not the best strategy, but, so I'm just curious on, yeah, so that, yeah, if that language can be clarified, or if that requires a reading, or just if staff can kind of...
So if you have some recommended language, we could incorporate that when it goes to first reading, because tonight's the kind of the public hearing where we're fleshing these things out, accepting comments, and trying to work through some of these kinks. I do get what you're saying, and...
Well, because I think, you know, another way of looking at it is that not requiring additional off-street parking than what currently exists, you know, is kind of the other way it's been, like, if you have a big structure right now, don't say, "Oh, I can turn that into something else," but if no parking exists on the site, then we're not going to make you provide that somewhere else. Because otherwise, it leaves an ambiguity to where I don't think we're really doing what the vision was stated on the first two slides, because it seems like a process that's still a little bit convoluted. Like, the rest, just to go back to the restaurant, because I think that, I commend staff for that, because it was very clear, here's a threshold, anything below it, this building that you love that has no conceivable way of providing parking, we can walk through that process and determine that you don't have to provide any parking. It's not, we might determine that you're an office building and therefore provide 50 spaces, or we might decide, "Oh, but we like this building, so no parking," you know, because that, that isn't a way to get people confidently investing in downtown.
So maybe, just throwing it out, I'm looking at the language, "shall not be subject to any additional off-street parking than what currently exists," as set forth in this chapter, for the current building.
I'm open to what other commissioners think, but I think it's just... I'm going to let Commissioner Coleman speak, most definitely.
Well, my original reason for requesting Mr. Coyle look at this parking plan from last year, parking study from last year, was I really wanted to know what we were doing about the parking in the downtown, other than just exempting businesses from the parking requirement, you know, because that's kind of a never-ending deal. If we're not doing anything to fix the parking problem, we're just going to continue to exempt businesses, then we're just going to compound the problem. So it kind of has to be both things at the same time, and that was why I was glad to hear that they are implementing some of these things in that plan and looking at additional stuff. So I'm hesitant to just carte blanche exclude everybody from the parking requirement.
Well, and I would just make the motion that we aren't, that the way this is written, to me anyway, is that we're not saying that this is a right for whoever owns property downtown. We're saying that there's a collection of buildings that exists in our downtown that we believe contribute to the character that were developed at a time before parking standards that we currently require existed. Are we going to let them continue to be a barrier to developing downtown? I mean, if a developer comes in and decides, "I want to put an eight-story, you know, structure on what was currently one-story," they're subject to the parking requirements of our code. It's not a grab for people to come in and start densifying downtown without any parking, but it's saying that we have a collection of buildings that have historically remained vacant, and there are certain barriers to the reality that there is no, that it seems that there are not feasible ways for someone to come in and renovate them, because they consistently remain vacant, or they are maybe underutilized in use, like you described with Citizens Bank, to where things that could really contribute to downtown revitalization and not city efforts, but public investment in the downtown are hindered because of, you know, these buildings were built in a way that they can't remain and us expect the parking standards that we expect. It's kind of how I'm seeing it. It's, so it's not kind of everyone come in and start putting in towers and parking will figure itself out, but it's, these are a collection of buildings that exist. How are we going to make these buildings that exist have meaning in our, what is becoming a very vibrant downtown, revitalized downtown? How do we, you know, we talk a lot about blight, we talk a lot about ISOs, we talk about how can we take these collection of things that exist and, you know, and so that, I mean, that to me is, was kind of, when I was reading this, I think, the intent, and I think that the confusing of use is really whether it's saying, okay, as you exist, you can be revitalized, or whether it's saying, you know, if you want to densify your use, it's, you know, because that's two very different things. Commissioner Bell?
And if I may add, when Kern Cog put the money up for this last parking report a couple of years ago, I can tell you that the door was open wide for all community folks to get out and participate in asking for things that needed to be done and resolved. And so the staff has done a good job, and on their own to some degree, figuring out issues that help development, encourage development. And I would even say, this doesn't necessarily solve anything specifically, but it opens doors to you all, creating avenues and opportunity to blighted properties. There's just no doubt about it. They're in trouble, and even owners that are aggressive in an attempt to sell aren't able to do that. What I'd like to hope and believe is that this will draw us to a next level of parking report, that then eventually may encourage us to building garages and other types of things that are central to our district and create too much parking, but available opportunity for businesses that truly will never be able to put parking on their lot, to participate either by leasing long-term, 20, 30, 40 stalls, whatever, encourage them to change their use. And I think I trust staff enough to make good decisions toward that end, so I think you're in the right direction, and that's my two cents.
Are there any other commissioners wishing to speak? Commissioner Loomis? No? What? I couldn't, your look, I couldn't tell if you were waiting, or...
I'm just going to make note of that.
Okay.
As long as that doesn't be said.
I know. Yeah, so we decide the intent of the language and what...
So you're correct on the intent of the language, is to make it as easy as possible to get somebody in. I mean, that's the intent. And I'll ask Building, how would you apply this if it came in as worded today and somebody wanted to renovate, let's say, the building across the street from 24th Street Cafe?
I think it would, the planning requirements would be waived. I think that the planning requirements would be waived based on this verbiage.
The way I see it, you're trying to loosen it up. It's a little bit vague on purpose. Isn't that what everybody's asking for? I think you got there.
So you did have something to say.
Well, I mean, seriously, at 6:17.
The night is young. We haven't even been first hour.
Seriously, they did. I just don't understand, yeah, it does it for me, so I'm good. I'll make a motion to adopt unless our chairman wants to add some words.
Let me reread. So Building, you're saying the intent is then to basically waive the requirements of what the modern code would apply to a building that was developed...
I would echo what Commissioner Bell said, in that the intent of this would be to assist in the downtown vision of revitalizing downtown and giving people the ability to improve vacant properties and improve vacant buildings without such a restrictive code as parking is. Parking shies a lot of people away from improving vacant buildings, so...
Well, and I should clarify to my fellow commissioners and staff, I'm not, I'm not, I think that I am grateful this was brought forward, and I just, I think, it was a question of wording, because I think a lot of times with these, it's in the details, and, so that was just a question. So I think if the intent is truly to, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Loomis, actually. I think staff, let me just read it once more, and then... I might take two minutes, just, we have time. It's not even the, we're in hour one still, come on.
Was that a motion by, was there a motion by?
I will make the motion, but I haven't called for it yet.
Just so you guys know, when you make the motion to recommend approval to city council, will be the motion.
Just to get you ready.
The motion will be to recommend approval to city council rather than to... The motion will be to recommend approval to City Council rather than to adopt it tonight, just to...
To make the recommendation to council to, okay. May I get a motion? I think I'm good with, I think I'm good with the language the way it is.
Sure.
So we have a motion to adopt, to recommend to council?
You want to? Okay. What Richard said.
Is that an adequate motion?
Good enough?
That'll work.
All right. I'm lighting this up.
Commissioner Lomas, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Bowers. Commissioners, please cast your vote.
Ryan, don't go. Ryan, I want to ask you a question.
That was a nice little thrown in. Okay. Moving on to communications, Mr. Coyle. Unless Commissioner Lomas, do you have something for Ryan? All right. Okay. 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 Well, Ryan, please stay put, and Mr. Coyle, would you please provide comments? Thank you.
The only announcement I have is that our next Planning Commission meeting will be Thursday, November 7th, at 5:30 here in Council chambers.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner comments? All right. That, we can't have that. All right. With that, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:21. Have a great evening.